Town Council. Calling to order the Wednesday, November sixth, meeting of the town council study committee. Remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded, so. Anything, any comments you make will be part of the recording, so. Behave appropriately. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda, please? All in favor? Alrighty. We have one set of minutes that, thank you to Kelly for. Volunteering to do the minutes for the sixteenth and the thirtieth. I was able to get the minutes of the. October sixteenth meeting, everybody, any comments, edits?
Move through. Have a second?
All in favor? Great, okay. Our principal agenda item today is to resume the conversations about resident participation and in a town council environment. And Anthony, can I turn it over to you?
Yes, and I will be turning it right over to Patricia Lloyd, Pat, please take it away.
Thank you. I'm going to share our memo that we started on last time. And tell me if the wrong thing shows up. Let's see. Okay. When last we talked, we did an overview of all of the measures. So we're going to backtrack a little bit and come back and talk about. The open meeting of the voters. We started to have some discussion on that, so I thought we could open this up again and perhaps. Kind of take a, take a feel for the, of the room for whether this is something you'd like to include? And if you have an opinion on the threshold number of voters?
I have an opinion. My opinion was that that number's too low, and I think it should be at least two hundred. Based on our voter population.
I mean, I'll just, I actually think. Given that I think we all believe that. Voter or citizen concerns about change here is gonna, is gonna have a big focus on access and communication with the town council. I think this open meeting of voters, at least as analogous to current open, open meeting, even though it has, really has no vote or, you know, sort of legislative power, but. I would think it would be viewed positively by the. Citizens of Nantucket. And I would, and I would, I would actually disagree with you Curtis, I actually would, could live with a hundred and fifty, but. I don't know what the rest of the committee thinks.
I'm not going to the mat for two hundred.
Say that there's something else.
Coming. Anthony did say, I think, don't make it too easy to. Force meetings on every subject, so as we go through the numbers here, I think we should keep in mind. What it should take at the level of the discussion to. Convene a meeting.
Yeah, do we know what the number is for a special town meeting, is that? I think we've talked two hundred, is it two hundred?
Yes.
Why don't we pick two hundred, I mean, this, in effect, this is gonna be a. I don't know, an ad hoc group discussion, formally known as town meeting.
But no, well.
But no, but, but still, you, you want, you want the cutoff, I just, just a little bit. A number, a similar number for a similar meeting.
And the council can still always call one on their own, if there's enough. Scuttle amongst the town.
I think that's why I said two hundred.
Open meeting of the voters.
I don't care, I'm not gonna fight anybody on.
Well, not, two hundred, two hundred? Okay, Pat, two hundred.
Okay, fantastic, I want to, one other matter that we had discussed was. Consideration of how in the town of Amherst, just for this section, open town meeting, or open meeting of the voters. In Amherst, they approved it being one hundred and fifty residents. As opposed to town voters, I wanted to let you know, I, I followed up on that with Amherst, and our colleague. Who was involved in that charter process. I spoke with him, but also spoke with a member of that committee. And the reason they included residents really because, was because they wanted to include. Non-voting permanent residents who may not be citizens and not be permitted to vote. They also wanted to have, or perhaps eighteen year olds who had not yet registered to vote. They wanted to make it a little more inclusive. In the Amherst Charter, there is a definition of resident as. Somebody who has their domicile in Amherst. For this particular section, they were less concerned about. Certifying signatures and voting and making sure it's voters, because they thought if, if two hundred people wanted to talk about an issue, that was reason enough for them to hold a meeting. And so, in this particular process. They did establish bylaws and a. Form to fill out to get the signatures. So it was, this part was just intended to be a little more expansive, so I know you were considering that, and I don't wanna skip by it. So I thought perhaps you'd like to discuss what your thoughts are on that.
Just for the record, our street list will give you the list of residents, they're not necessarily voters, but they are residents, so. We already have the street list as a reference to. Term that.
And, and in Amherst, they discussed that they also use. You know, the census, the census has certain. Certain places as their domicile, if they're included for census purposes, then they would, were included for resident purposes.
So you, you can pass bylaws at these town meetings, at these special town meetings?
Um, no, the bylaws were passed by town council to give detail. Really, the charter is just the bare bones of the process. And the, this, this only came up once since then, only one time did they have somebody call for this. So they decided to establish procedures by bylaw, just. For example, what the paperwork would look like. Similar to the others, they said the first ten signatures were considered the people that they would notify of any meetings, et cetera, so. The bylaws were passed by town council kind of to flesh out the bare bones of this article.
Shall we talk about this last time briefly, that is, at any town. People can come and address them on any issue, and they can be a resident or they can be a voter. And so this is just. Sort of, you must formally have a meeting or. You must discuss this, so there are like two different ways that people can address, as I understand it. And so, since there are these two separate ways to address. Seem to me, you don't wanna make it too onerous on, on whatever. You know, what are you really accomplishing?
Well, I, I mean, I think what you're accomplishing by having this open meeting is giving the voters an opportunity to gather in a larger group than just showing up at a town council meeting. And having the ability to have a big open debate, and at least communicate on it, but doesn't give, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm personally, I'm saying, oh. I don't, I'm not sure what it accomplishes politically, but it certainly gives people the opportunity to discuss it.
Do you have to be a registered voter to go to the meeting?
No, that's what kind of what Pat, I think, what Pat's saying is that Amherst must have a definition of resident that you don't necessarily, that could include people that are not voters.
Because they have a lot of students.
Wait, but I think your question is still unanswered, yeah.
Like, you gotta be a registered voter to go to our town meeting now. Do you have to be a registered voter to go to these open meetings?
No, you do not.
Yeah.
And so the resident part is just with respect to who has, who can sign the petition to hold this meeting. Anyone can show up and speak, I believe in. Generally, I, I think it might be in the case with you, but generally in town meetings. Non-residents would speak at the discretion of the moderator.
Donna, you had your hand up?
I did. I see, you know, you're talking about a hundred and fifty or two hundred voters, and I would appreciate if. As Patricia was saying, anybody could be invited, but it would have to be the voters who could. Assign or petitions and so forth, but non-voters in particular would be a concern. And I'm sure many would want to attend some of these open meetings. So could we be clear about non-voters somewhere in there? Or, or a different language or whatever?
I, I think, Donna, through the chair, I think what we're talking about right now, as I understand it, is whether or not. Non-voters can be the petitioners of this, this meeting, not just the attendees, but can they petition to have it? So that's, that's the conversation right now.
Yes.
And, and the fact that Amherst has defined residents, like it sounds to me of, as voters and people that happen to reside in the town but are not voters. Which, which Donna would exclude some, a group like the non-voting taxpayers, because those, those folks are not, you know, at least in, in what we're talking about right now, aren't. Aren't defined as residents of Nantucket, now. I suppose, I suppose if we wanted to include non-voting.
Well, I think that non-voting taxpayers are actually included in the definition of resident.
That's what I'm curious about, I, I'd like that clarification, please.
Street list is resident, which.
It is. I think there's some legal thing that says that it is, it is a definition, that resident.
Didn't, didn't you say something about that it was people that were domiciled in the town of Amherst?
That's how Amherst defined it in their definition section of the charter, and you can define it how you wish to define it, it's very difficult to. To establish this, the fact they use the word domicile, it has a legal meaning that's full of case law. And it's, for example, where do you, you know, where do you have your driver's license, where do you live most of the time, where do you get your mail? So there's a legal definition of domicile that's used, it's probably. It's something that they're weighing a variety of factors, so that said. The town of Amherst doesn't have the same process of checking off signatures for this section. For example, they don't have the clerk, you know, because it's just residents. They're really not as concerned, you know, as long as this person has an address. So, so they are trying to make it expansive, so they have a domicile, but they don't have a very. You know, detailed checking process. However, you could define residents how you would like to, you could say full or part-time residents, you could say, you know, a variety of things. And, and this is something that you could define, but I think in Amherst, what they really were looking to do. Is to bring in, you know. Perhaps non-citizens who were permanent residents had lived there for twenty-five years and their kids are in the school system, and they would like to have a say too on some matter. I think that's what they were trying to bring in, you could define it in a different way.
I think that Nantucket, you could say is a parallel to Amherst in the sense that we also have. Groups of people here, summer residents being one, and, or seasonal residents being one, and. Non-citizens being the other, and so. I think that opens up our conversation to discuss whether in the conversion to town council form of government. One of our, our purposes is to include more people, and is that one of the ways that we would do it?
I, I just wanted to add, I, I did not, I don't wanna interrupt, but. They also use the definition of are these people included in the, in the census, and they found that for that, it was do they live there on April first? Is whether they would be included in the census, for those purposes. So, just so you understand the parameters of how they define it. And that's also part of the definition of domicile, where do you spend most of your time, where do you file your taxes, do you file taxes in that location?
Curtis?
I, I just wanna go back to my point. We have a list of residents. Voters and non-voters, it's called the street list. It's what the steamship uses to determine if you're gonna get a resident excursion fare. I don't think we need to create another list. We have one that exists and encompasses them, and frankly, summer. Residents are not on the street list because they're not residents of Nantucket, and I think we should focus on the street list. As the way to determine if you're eligible to sign or come. Everyone can come, but sign.
Well, I mean, we're looking for, basically what I'm trying to say is what, what groups of people can sign this petition for this open meeting?
And it's the street list.
Well, I, I will, I, I will admit some sympathy for the non-voting taxpayers, and I think allowing them to be. That group to be. I don't know what's the right word, legal signatures on this, on this petition, I think would be, would be consistent with the way we've talked about. Other people's voices being allowed at town council meetings and so on, and. I don't know, I, I guess. Leaving aside, I'm not quite sure how you define it. I would be willing to have non-voting taxpayers be allowed petition signers, so. Or was that just a stretch?
No, that's, I can end up, there's. I don't know how many. Fifty thousand people that come here in the summer?
Yeah.
Number that's way bigger than. The people who live here currently, so. Come here, sure, or come to the meeting, sure, I think where we're thinking this, I think just, the way it is now is if you're a resident, you can sign a petition. I just, and, and if you wanna. You know, they wanna check when you, that you actually live there, then I think that's the way it should be.
I mean. I, I guess my thought on this. If you're a resident of that nature, you can still always go to the town council meeting and ask them to call a meeting, or get enough people together to go that are residents. To say, we wanna have a discussion about this larger issue. Can you guys please hold one of these? And then if you're a voter, you can. Freely petition to just do it, I mean, I think. By allowing everyone to participate in that, you're allowing that to happen, but I think you're also, you know, during our public forums, we heard concerns about. You know, if you're a voter here, making sure that you still have rights as the voter, I think. There's lots of avenues to get this meeting called. I think if you leave it with the voters to say, you guys freely petition to call it and have it. If you're a resident or a group of residents, you can certainly come and say, if you'd like this issue talked about, to the regular council meeting, if they feel it arises to this level of discussion, they can call a meeting.
Would it be helpful to maybe change the definition a little bit, besides voters, in addition, perhaps property owners?
I'm getting, I'm getting the impression that the, that the, that the, at least the group here in, in person is kind of. You know, voters and non-voting residents of the island, but not. Non-voting taxpayers, is that, am I grasping the sense here?
Essentially, that's the street list.
I'm fine with it just being.
Yeah, but that one, I agree, the only reason I say that though, and this is it, it's just because it looks like you can only. Hold one meeting per year, but on, on one subject, or you can?
I think it's the way I read that.
Repeat the subject twice in a year, is how I read that.
Yeah, like if you wouldn't have a discussion about. Short-term rentals, you can have this open town meeting once. In a twelve-month period about short-term rentals. As this forum for that meeting. But you could have another one on. More quality, or whatever you wanted to do. But I don't think it precludes, I mean, you could still have the council, if they wanted to continue a discussion on short-term rentals, agenda that as part of their regular meeting. And you could still go talk about it.
As it says, their own initiative. Is already there, that's covered. I would like to say this should not apply to the school committee, but just to the town council.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. Alright, we're, I'm not sure where we're, where we're going on this one, but it's, it sounds like. A two hundred, we need two hundred signatures, and the signatures can be from. Taxpayers, I'm sorry, yes. Could come voters and. Registered residents.
That's not what I'm gathering from the group.
It isn't?
No, what, what I'm gathering from the group is that we've, they are, we are as a group. Landing on the side of, it's the voters who petition. And the non-voters can come to that meeting and participate, and they can participate in any of the town council meetings. That's what I took away, did I misread that?
I thought we started on this with, with Amherst as the example, which allowed. Voting citizens and non-voting residents to be signed into this petition.
Right, and I was suggesting that Nantucket. Can be seen as a parallel, because I think this is underneath a lot of. Of the public's interest, and Donna is representing that as our representative from the non-voting taxpayer group. So I think we should get into it, so that's why I raised it, because this is that issue. So, but I, raising it was to hear what people felt about it, and what I heard people feeling about it was that. Amongst this group, there's a preference for it to be, the petitioners be the voters. And the attendees can be both. Did I?
I agree with that.
I agree with that, yeah.
There should be some kind of privilege with being a registered voter, but thank you.
And where Beau pointed out that there's roughly fifty thousand. Non-voting taxpayers who are the seasonal residents. That number is pretty striking when you hold that up next to the year-round voting population. I mean, just so, just from a statistical point of view, I think that's, that's something that we need to look at.
In Curtis's, or it's not something I need to go to the mat for, I think is what he said. I'm okay with it being like the street list or some, something equitable to that. It seems like an easy enough. Tweet to make that does encompass this kind of, the kind of non-voting taxpayer concern and issue that's come up a bunch. Without it having too serious of implications. Of outs, of outside interests being able to kind of have a disproportionate amount of agency. And if we go down to eight point two B, that's where, that is specific to voters and actions required, which seems like that still. Gives agency to the, the other voters and residents year-round. Getting mixed up with definitions, not year-round residents, but the group we're focusing on.
Can I have, will someone then put a motion on the? Sorry, yeah, go ahead, Donna.
I apologize. Would you give me some examples of non-voting residents?
Are you asking me?
I'm asking the chair or, or anyone.
Reencourage.
A person who's moved here and hasn't registered to vote here yet, or has never registered to vote, or somebody who is just. Maybe not legal, but maybe a resident of the island, island.
So, I guess, I guess my question is, are you saying that non-voting residents. Can participate in the open meeting of the voters? But non-voting taxpayers cannot?
No, that's not.
They're talking about who can sign the petition, not who can show up and petition, and show up and participate in the meeting. Okay, so participate in the meeting.
That would be, non-voting residents can participate in the meeting, and non-voting taxpayers can participate, both.
Correct, they just can't sign the petition.
Neither one, okay.
Well, it depends whether you say voters or residents, but yes, though, as it's written with voters, they could not sign the petitions if they were a non-voting resident. And, and, you know. Whatever you land on is just fine, you know, I don't know if you wanna take a straw poll on this, or if you just wanna come to a consensus. At the end, when you're finished with everything, there'll be a full vote on everything, so I don't think you have to take a formal vote on this right now. But it would be great to have an idea of what to put in the draft for you to vote on later, you know, just kind of a straw poll of where your preferences lie.
Yeah, Caroline?
I'm just going back to Curtis's. Repeated reminder that the street list accomplishes this, because the street list is voters.
Right there, the first, first line, it says including names and addresses, that's the street list. It's our master list of. People with you.
Okay.
So I think, I, I think the point of why we increased it was to make it. Not easy to call one of these with the logistics involved, and if the topic is large enough in the community to call one. I would imagine you can easily get two hundred voters.
Of course you can.
And it sounds like we're also doing that in line with what we do right now to call a short.
Special time meeting.
So I, I would be in favor of putting a motion out there to say two hundred voters and eliminate school committee from the language.
Then you're saying voters, not residents.
Voters, yeah. Anybody can participate. But I would say voters need to be the ones to. Call me.
Okay.
Yes, and they are required to put their names and addresses, is how I read that.
Let's call this a straw poll as opposed to a formal motion, I think.
Call it straw poll.
Abstain, I still have questions, because I think this is a really interesting conversation.
Kelly, have a, wanna, yeah, your name on Rachel's motion, or basically Rachel's straw poll idea?
Yeah, I say yes.
I think we start talking about the fifty thousand people that universe, then all of a sudden two hundred signatures doesn't seem like a lot.
Well, I don't think we were ever, I, I agree with you, that's, that's not a universe of people that should be signing this petition, alright. It sounds like two hundred voters and. Anybody, and, and the meeting would allow voters, non-voters, non-voting taxpayers. And then removing the school committee.
Yeah, school committee comes out of all of us.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm gonna move on to the free petition. And I think we've discussed this, and you may be fairly settled on this one. As we talked about the free petition, the first one just says that they, the, the town council, and we can remove the school committee if you don't want the school committee in this. Shall receive all petitions signed by one or more residents, and this is just that they have to accept these petitions and read them, and, and that probably happens already. At your select board meetings, and there's probably like attachments of things that people have asked you to do. So that's, that's pretty standard in all charters. The second part just talks about that the town council shall hold a public hearing with respect to every petition addressed to it, signed by at least a hundred voters. And that. They take some action within a certain period of time. We talked about this last time, I think that. You landed on. I thought you said a hundred and fifty, but you landed on a number smaller than calling a full, open. Town meeting or a public forum, but you may want to discuss that, and then we'll put in whichever number you're interested in. I think you, I think there was a consensus to include this type of meeting. But perhaps you can tell me if you have a threshold number that you want to build consensus around.
I defer to you.
Yeah, I. Not getting a lot of, I, I think we do wanna include this, and. I, I just personally, I don't feel strongly a hundred, I, I think two hundred is probably more than a little high for this one, no, so I would say a hundred or a hundred and fifty, what is the group? So I, I would say a hundred or a hundred and fifty, what is the group?
I'm not sure what would be different than the one up above.
No, I was gonna say, I just think it's a matter of resources and the difference between having something on. The town council's agenda versus having a separate meeting where you bring everyone in who wants to discuss the matter, et cetera. So, um, it, I think it's a li- little bit of a smaller number because it's just about getting on the council agenda and having them take action.
You know, if there, if there's an issue that's, you know, a small group of people, um. You know, I want stop signs put at this intersection, or I want such, you know, something that is. I don't know, achievable and not that outrageous, I, it seems to be a hundred might be the right number just because it's, that's a fair amount of work and a fair amount of standing.
Always draw the hundred and fifty in favor of your hundred.
Wait, I'm fine with a hundred. Hundred is.
Hundred, I know about five things that the Brown Point Association will bring.
No, they're not, no, actually, because they're not voters.
Uh, well, some of us are. Oh, right, they have to be hundred voters, yes, yes, yes.
All right, is everybody okay with a hundred?
Or else you're gonna be standing off the stop and shop.
No school committee again.
Pat, let's move on, quick.
Okay, next we're gonna talk about resident initiative matters, um, there's a couple of thresholds for this. This essentially is when the residents bring a specific action and they want a specific. Piece of legislation to be passed, um, in a certain amount, sign it, um, and then it is. You know, and then it is sent to the attorney, um, the town council. To take a look at it and make sure that, um, and make sure it's appropriate for legislation. For example, that they're not asking them to legislate something that would violate state or local law. Um, so usually there's a two-step process, the first step is how many signatures do, does it take to get to the attorney? Um, and then, once, um, there's the signatures, they're, take action on the, well, actually. I think on this one, the example that I showed you, there's not a dual, um, there's not a dual signature. That does get kind of complicated, um, but if the, if it's in proper form, um, the town council has to either pass it. Um, fail to pass it, or if they pass something slightly different than that, that's deemed, um, that it is not been passed. Um, and then. This is where the, actually where the second step is, if it, if what's being asked is not being passed, they ask for an additional amount of voters. So I guess it's a lower threshold to get in front of the town council and get to town council to make a decision. Once, um, that decision has been voted up or voted down, additional signatures are then collected. In, in this case, it says in an amount equal to ten percent, um, and then if those. Signatures are collected, then a ballot issue is held on that matter. Now, this language is pretty, you'll see this language in a lot of charters and it's very particular to charters, um, if you look. At, um, there's a few decision points here. First is if you, um, would like to include and, and even though it says free petition, that's a mistake, it should say, um. It should say resident petition init- or, or initiative option, um. How many, and how many signatures should be required, so, um, you may have the chart. That I showed you, um, pretty much every. One of the council managers does have this initiative petition, um, and, but there's a wide variety of signatures. Um, for example, it might be two hundred and fifty upfront, plus an additional five percent or, or a total five percent. So these numbers are so, a little bit all over the board, so the numbers that I've inserted in here are fairly, um. Pretty much land in the middle. Um, the first is the signatures of a hundred, so it's, it's kind of like you can get us, you can get a hundred signatures. To just get in front of town, um, council under free petition. Um, and then do you want that same amount to initiate this ballot measure issue? Um, that you may decide you want slightly more because it's going to the ballot, but ultimately it's, you're gonna add on to that. Um, I guess I just want to stop and see if you understand this process and then we can talk a little bit about the numbers.
I mean, to, to me, Pat, this reads like an article at open town meeting. Um, I don't know that, I don't know if that analogy holds, but it, it, it sort of feels like that to me, um. You have to have a certain number of signatures to kind of. Get it on the agenda for the, so the town councillors and then if they. Vote against it, there's sort of another, there was another hurdle, which is obviously articles at town meeting, uh, kind of have one go, but, um. That's sort of the way it reads to me, so.
Question is, does that, does that mean that you would like the initial petition to be more like. A citizen's warrant that requires two hundred vote, um, two hundred voters, um, and then additional ones, um, we, I think I. Wrote in this section, so for example, um, for the first. Oh, no, that's for the threshold, I have numbers up at the top, don't get dizzy while I move this to the top. But, um, so if you could start with a hundred or two hundred voters and then, um. You're gonna want to look at what total number do you want to get to the ballot, so for example, um, five is four hundred. Eighty-seven, et cetera, so. I wanna, there's so many different things to compare it to, I guess the best analogy I can say is you want to make it. Possible, not impossible to do, but not something that happens all the time, Anthony, it sounds like you might have a better explanation.
No, no, your, your explanation was very good, I just wanted to just provide some sort of broader context. Particularly on this section as the committee considers what numbers it wants to use, just as you're thinking about this, um, just remember that. The context is that the council will be having meetings with things on their agenda, obviously from the town manager, um. Things that are created on their own initiative and usually councillors are putting items on their agenda based on what they're hearing from the community. So, this is not the only avenue for items to go on their agenda, the councillors are gonna, you know, they can and should. Really be in the community hearing from their constituents and that should be forming, um, the types of items that they put on. So, when you're thinking about this avenue, this is an alternative in the sense that, um. I, I guess in my own mind, and this is, I, for what it's worth, I'll just give you sort of my two cents on it, it's, if you think that. You know, a large, a very large portion of your community, uh, wants to address an issue and the council just doesn't address it. Touch it at all, and this provides sort of that sort of third, you know, door into this room to make sure that they're. Uh, talking about or discussing about things, so I just wanted to give you that context as you think about this particular section in relationship to. The actual operation of the body.
I'm sorry, chairman, go.
Uh, just, it strikes me that, just to get it on the agenda, which is what this accomplishes, that you. Go through a multi-step process that then requires at the end, two thousand twenty percent, uh, signatures. That's a hell of a threshold just to get something on the agenda.
And this, to get it to a ballot, so this is to get it to a situation where the voters decide that you will implement. This, um, piece of legislation.
So, so, so the town councillors could, in effect, act positively on this petition, sort of on phase one, and, and the. Getting it on the ballot is really an issue, it is really a situation where.
It's an override, isn't it?
Well, the, the town council saying no, vote no on it, and then the petitioners.
I don't know.
Uh, maybe I'm not reading it right, sorry.
Yeah, I think before we even get into the quantities, Pat, could you just go over like the trajectory of it? It's a hundred signatures, then they have to be confirmed by the attorney general, then.
Just the town attorney, um, it's a hundred signatures, um, the attorney makes sure it's something that they can even ask for. Um, they're not asking for something illegal, um, and then it goes before the town council. The town council either says, yes, we'll do what you'd like us to do, um, no, we won't do it. Um, and if they say, or, let's try this other thing, and then at that point. The petitioners can decide, I accept your decision, or, um, I accept your compromise on this. Or they can say, well, no, I'd really like this to go in front of the voters as a whole. And if they choose to go before the voters of the whole, um, in this case. They have to have a total number of voters, um, ten, of ten percent signatures in order to get. Um, at, get an election, because that's a really significant process for your town to undergo an election. Um, and then, um, we're, we'll talk a little bit further and then there's a form of the question. And then if this passes at the election, um, then it, it must be implemented. So this is a little bit like putting an item on the state ballot, like we just voted on a number of ballot initiatives. Um, so that's why the numbers are higher for just having this at a meeting to be heard and decided upon.
The way to override the, actually, the, uh.
Well, but it takes, it takes it, it takes the signatures to get to the ballot, and then, then you have to prevail on the ballot too.
Yeah.
Correct, and, and that's the one other caveat I didn't want to confuse you to get to, you can decide, um, a certain number of people have to show up. At the ballot in order for something to pass, so for example, you have a special election on putting up a stop sign. You know, what if only, like, nobody cares and a hundred people show up? Um, then you would have fifty-one people making a decision for the whole community, so you can decide that at least, you know, tw-. Twenty percent, that's the number that's usually chosen, have to actually vote in order for this, um, initiative to pass.
Okay, so.
Another step.
To actually, actually have the ballot and it have a, have an election valid, and twenty percent have to show up.
That doesn't mean twenty percent have to vote yes, but twenty percent have to just show up and vote. Um, so maybe we have ten percent for and ten percent against, but in order for it to be a valid, um, result, a twenty percent. Um, have to show up. Um, so maybe we should break this down a step and say, first of all, if you're interested in having this type. Of provision to get an item on the ballot directly, um, in front of the voters. If the town council does not decide to move an issue forward. Um, and as we mentioned, most, I think all, um, I don't know if you have the chart in front of you, I can't put two documents up, but, um. You know, all of the council manager, uh, communities, uh, that are, that have this form of government charter. Do have this type of initiative process and, um, as was said, it somewhat replaces the citizens' initiative petition of town meeting.
Alright, I just wanted to be sure, after this gets on the ballot. Twenty percent of the registered voters have to show up to vote, that's four thousand people.
So, um, we looked at. According to the twenty twenty-four, um, local election results. Twenty-three point nine percent of residents voted, so twenty percent may be reasonable. You may think it should be lower, you may decide you don't need a threshold at all, um, that's completely, you know, within your purview. And some, some, some communities don't have any threshold, um, the most typical thresholds, um, are twenty or twenty-five percent.
So.
Pat, does it have to be a special election or can it just be consistent with the, like, election schedule?
So, usually what's written in, um. If there's any other town election within a hundred and twenty days after the date of the certification, all, you get all your signatures. Then the matter can go to the right, the regular election instead of a special.
Indeed.
Can we just do away with special election and then just go to the next election?
Um, you, you probably could, I think the reason for it is usually timeliness, it's usually, it's usually a matter of. Um, say you want the town to buy a piece of property that you don't want to be let go, um. And it's usually a matter of just getting, getting it accomplished in an efficient and quick process. So, that's why communities do have this, you know, you either have a special election or wait. Uh, we'll talk, something similar will happen if we talk about, you know, recalls and referendum elections, so it's possible. Um, I'm not sure, uh, I'm not sure if any communities have actually done away with the special election, it's usually. Um, you know, you could maybe increase the date of, if anything's held from a hundred and twenty days to, you know, a hundred and fifty days or, or whatever. Um, but, um, it's.
Right.
Usually not done away with.
Okay, I, I'm in favor of just how it's written.
Yeah, I, I, I think you've got sort of a hundred signatures gets you in front of the, the town council. And they, you know, and, well, I, I can imagine that lots of sort of minor day-to-day things that will work, you, you either, people, people will go along with. The yes vote if the town council goes that way, or they'll go along with the no vote, or they'll negotiate some sort of a compromise. To go to the, the ballot initiative, the hurdle is huge, and I think it would be daunting for a lot of people to say, you know, do I really, really want to fight this battle? At the next level, but that's what it should be.
Huge, yeah, right.
You'd have to go out and get eleven signatures, which. Seems like a lot, but it's not, and so you could do it and put it to a ballot, that's, that's totally fair, and I think. This is a workaround to town council, which I think people should have.
Okay, are we, are we okay then with, as written, um, you know, a hundred signatures in the first two paragraph and then the. Ten percent, twenty percent, um, pay on the next page, section, I guess continuation of that point. Okay.
Okay, great, um, just, Justin is aside, um, and before, uh, before we get into this next. Provision, I just wanted to say that most of these things are result, there are very few that actually make it onto the ballot. And it's not because of lack of signatures, it's just generally that the idea that this has been. The, uh, signet- the signatures are being collected, um, usually results in some resolution or compromise. That, you know, makes the petitioners choose not to move forward with the election, um, so it's. These things are rare, the, you, getting it on the ballot is relatively rare, but it is possible and it does happen. It's usually more of a reason to compromise and get, um, town council talking with the petitioners. So the next section is the referendum, and this is, I would say somewhat the opposite of the initiative. In that this is to overturn a matter that the, um, town council has implemented and passed. So, um, if within fourteen, and so this has fewer levels and fewer, fewer thresholds. Because you don't necessarily need the attorney to weigh in on, you know, whether this is a legal action or not, it's already been passed. And it's a, um, voter opportunity to overturn it, so, um. Almost across the board, um, there's only, almost all towns say, the, the first should be signed. It's a one-step process, the first, um, level is signatures of five percent of registered voters to overturn this matter. Um, be, it's a high enough threshold that, um, it's not necessarily easy to overturn. Um, because you don't want to be disruptive to, you know, town councils', um, regular business. Um, but on the other hand, it's a, it's, it's a target that can be reached. Uh, so, most have five percent as their threshold, um, a couple towns have fifteen percent, um. Watertown and North Attleboro have fifteen percent, um, so it's really a philosophy of whether you want this to be a tool that's. You know, achievable, or if it's a tool that, you know, you really want to rule out, but only have in case of an emergency. Where you really need to over to, you know, where you really have a groundswell of support to overturn it, um, so. The language is pretty standard, um, we also put language in here that at least twenty percent of registered voters have to actually vote. Because once again, um, you know, if not a lot of people turn up, um, you. Many towns don't want to have, um, just a few people turning up make a difference. Um, be able to, you know, overturn the action of the council. Um, so the first question we have is, you know, do you wish to include this referendum option? Um, this is similar to what happens, uh, with town meeting, um, in representative town meetings. Representative town meetings have an opportunity, um, if. Voters don't like the decisions that their, um, representative town meeting has made to overturn it. Um, so it's similar to that, the same function is not usually available in open town meetings because you have your voters there. You don't need this next option for voters to overturn it, um, but in any event, the first question is if this is something. You wish to consider, um. All of the, all of the council manager cities and towns. Mu- all of the all of the council manager cities and towns um. That are in the in the group that we looked at except for um Bridgewater do have this um referendum provision. So I guess perhaps you might want to discuss, you know. Whether you want this option, um if you're happy with the um five percent signature requirement. And if you also want to use the same threshold of twenty percent of voters have to show up. For this to um be a an effective referendum.
Carolyn.
I was wondering why Bridgewater did not have this, if you know. Anything about that?
You know, I don't know, and it may just be, you know, a quirk of their charter that they didn't consider it. I'm not sure how old the Bridgewater charter is. Not all of the charters have things in the same order. Um I don't know the answer to that. It, you know, it it may just, a lot of these charters have been developed over time and a lot of these procedures have been included. So I I don't know. Whether they just didn't consider it or, you know, whether they chose not to have it.
Sure.
But I guess the argument against having it is just wanting to have a strong town council and um. Be and can and having concerns over the overturning of council um legislation. Although that can be handled with, you know, what your signature requirement is as well.
Pat, are you aware of any um of the other towns where this mechanism has been used?
You know, there's not a lot of good records of this. I can't think of any offhand. Um the petitions are usually more of an issue. Um Anthony and Mel, do you have any? Examples?
I'm not aware this being in used in Massachusetts in these in the charge it has. I don't know. Mel, do you? Are you aware of any?
Well, the representative town meetings, as Pat said, they have a provision and those are used. I wouldn't say frequently, but every now and then. So a a an action of representative town meeting gets taken to the voters. To overturn. I see that a lot.
I cannot. I think we I think we include it. I think we include it as as written. I I I think it should be included as written um.
Don't have to use it, but you can.
Well, yeah, don't have to use it. And I just, I think consistent with the way we've looked at at these other two mechanisms. I think the Nantucket voters are, you know, they're giving up town meeting. And I think this is just another sort of belt and suspenders that there are options for them to. Um. You know, combat some issue that they they think the town council hasn't responded to correctly, so. I mean, I I think from the public forums that we had, there was a real interest in ensuring that we had. Clear systems of checks and balances on things. And I think this is the. Outside of recall, where you're taking people off the council to say, you guys made a bad decision, so. We're gonna hold you accountable for it. I mean, you have to have that somewhere in there, right? I agree. I think I'm fine with. I would recall, but I think it's important to have. Man, the hurdles are pretty high, so.
Well, I'm curious for both. Gonna say.
Sorry, bro.
I can think of at least a couple instances where we would have used it had we this. Thing and. So I'm totally.
What are those issues?
I don't even want to go into it, to be honest, I'm just. Too dark. So let's just say. We would have used it.
They haven't.
Yeah.
Alright. Oh.
But these ineligible measures, is that written in? Um, this is a lot of stuff and.
We'll talk, we'll talk about that was next. Um. And um we'll talk about those next, but it sounds like there's a consensus that um this referendum should go in as written.
Yeah, I just.
I'm sorry, Carol.
I just have one follow up question. Pat, you said that. Perhaps one reason people didn't use it or Bridgewater didn't put it in. Might be because they were wanting to preserve a strong town council. So which. Suggests that this makes it a little less strong. It to put this in because it it obviously invites a correction or a a check and balance. From um the voters. Which is obviously what we're considering, but can you just, could you just review the way in which it would make it weaker? And and in in a way that might affect Nantucket.
Yeah, and and I guess weak maybe wasn't, you know, the spot on choice of words, but exactly what you said, it's a check and balance issue. Um it is, you know. Making the town council, most of these matters aren't used. Um. To the point where they get to a ballot frequently. Um but it is a way to have um a town council think about, you know, is this an act? How unpopular is this action? Is this something likely to be overturned? Are we, are we going completely against? You know, the residents, uh the voters' thoughts on this matter. So it is, it's a check and a balance and um it's a point of negotiation. Between what voters may want and what the town council may be offering.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey, thumbs up, Pat. Keep it in.
Alright, um so. Let me tell you, it's every every charter that has these measures, especially for um, you know, that. Has these measure talks about subjects that are not part of um the initiative, cannot be part of the initiative or referendum process. And these are usually related to um. How departments are organized, um emergency measures, the whole town budget. Um and these are, you know, borrowing money in anticipation of revenue. So these are. The nuts and bolts, financial and day to day administrative areas where um. Any sort of delay would cost the town. Um for example, proceedings relating to, you know, removal, discharge, employment promotion of staff. Or elected officials. Those matters are not subject to this because they're internal workings of the town government. Um. The ones that I put up are are very typical and part of a few different charters have this same language. Um so they're very typical. If you wanted to, I if you wanted to exclude other matters entirely, you are welcome to do so. But this is kind of the typical laundry list that allows government to function without being impeded by, you know. Inefficiency or um not being able to respond to emergency matters.
That. He. I mean, makes it makes sense and the list looks.
Reasonable to me.
And we could amend it if we need.
Well, it's gonna get it would get, yeah, it'll get amended. My guess is KP law goes through this, so. Certainly. Something and so.
They'll have to.
Okay.
Okay, um so I'm gonna talk about eight point six. Simply says that the town council um. And and if you'd like, it's if you want to consistently, you can take the school committee off of this one as well if you like. Um at the town council can submit matters to the ballot at its own uh of its own motion. Um so maybe it can't decide an issue or he it thinks in a an issue was too important or divisive. Or um they want really want to send it directly to the voters without deciding they have that um option to do that. Um in addition, they can have non binding public advisory questions pursuant to state law. So it's not meant to. It's not meant to preempt the state law that allows non binding issues to be sent to the ballot. Um it may um. It may send them it's itself. Um so for eight point six, uh it it's pretty standard. It just means that the town council can do the same thing that. You know, the citizens petitions can do and just send things to the voters. Um I would say it sounds like you'd want me to be consistent with the rest and take off. Um the school committee part on this section as well.
One question. Jeff, um would, under any circumstance, the school committee want us to put something back on the ballot? Uh or do they act a as school committee totally on their own authority and it's not needed? I don't know, maybe they would. Do something. I don't care. I take it off.
Well, I mean, I mean, the intersection of the. School but I mean, the only intersection it has with town meeting is is the budget, really. Um okay, I don't know.
Well, it's a, let's be consistent.
Yeah, let's, I would take the take school committee out like.
And and these are all points that when you have your public forum, um we'd also encourage you at some point in this process, you're going to want to. Um solicit some engagement from your departments. Um in town and see what they have to think about these things. And they may, they may chime in. And you may respond to this later in the process and make changes. Um, okay, the next provision. Um. Conflicting provisions just says if there's two conflicting provisions, only the one getting the greatest number of votes shall take effect. So. Um if I I think I mentioned if one initiative says we'd want to put a stop sign here. And one says we want to put a yield sign there, then whichever one has the most votes at the ballot is the one that um prevails. If there's two conflicting provisions. Um the next section is recall of elected office holders. Um and this. There's really two ways to handle this. Um but the first question is how what percentage? And we have added um a ten percent. Um I would say that cities and towns have have a wide variety of their thresholds. Those who have recall provisions, it's ten percent. It might be an, it might be a number like five hundred or or um. Twenty percent, um but ten percent is kind of a sweet spot in the middle, and there are several cities and towns that use that. Um so. You, this is really. You're an opportunity to um hold, remove elected officials in the middle of their terms. In general, uh it's not, it's prohibited within the first six months of a term and the last six months of the term. In order, because in the first six months, give them time to get going and do things right. You don't want to have an election and the people who aren't happy with the result. Immediately issuing a recall. Um in the last six months of the term, it's. It's so close to the end of the term that you're just gonna perhaps should just wait it out. Uh so I think what we want to talk about with respect to this one is first of all. If a ten percent thresh- if a ten percent signature rate um works for you. Um and then later down, we also have a similar threshold, at least twenty percent have to vote. Um there are also um discusses that. In the case of someone subject to recall and not recalled, you can't file another recall petition. Um in the next hundred and twenty days, this prohibits repeat ones. Um so. This provides for this particular provision. Um we haven't really talked too much about vacancies. This is just about removing the person. Um and in this case. The person is allowed to voluntarily resign and not go through with a um not go through with the recall election if they so choose. So I just want to stop and see if you have any questions or if you want to have any discussion on this.
Pat, have 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 these sort of recall uh provisions been used very often in the last ten or twenty years?
Um they're being used more often than they have been in the past. Um it is, they're not often very successful. Um but they're available if the if necessary. Um it's, there's a handful every year.
Jeremy, Joe, just strikes me that a a thousand voters. Can recall someone and if. You have three or four thousand, and we're we're electing three people every year, potentially, in what we're talking about. And you get uh. Seems like you could probably get thousand people are upset that their buddy didn't get in there and they could vote. It doesn't seem like it's quite a high enough threshold.
I mean, that, I'll I'll be, I mean, in reading this, I found that the the uh twenty percent of voters that at the tail end of the section. Was fine, but I had sort of same reaction as ten percent high enough. Um you really don't want people to do this, I think, but.
This this is for the signature, just so you know. I mean, it still has to go to the ballot. Um ten percent doesn't recall the person, ten percent sends it to a vote. Just.
Right.
Make you understand.
I I'm just, I'm no, I'm saying that that seems, you you want to make this sort of a. You have to go through a lot of work to make this happen. Um but I don't know, but if you whatever people think.
I think the ten percent is fine. You do have to provide grounds for recall. Um.
So you have to say what your grounds are. They don't have to meet. Um you have to say why you're requesting the recall. Um it doesn't have, you don't have to meet a certain standard under this language. So it's not saying it has to be misconduct, but you have to say why. You're offering this recall and and that kind of limits voting in that. You know, people who are reading it have to kind of agree with the reason as well.
Exactly. So I think the ten percent just for the signatures seems fine and then.
I'm okay with ten because I doubt it can be used very much.
Yeah, it's more of negotiation, honestly.
And I think to keep it in lets people feel that they have a piece of pie.
Exactly. Anyone else? It's the ultimate.
Check balance. Alright, so accept it as is. Seems like people are comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna use it.
Okay.
I I just wanted to mention that this provision is a one step process. So this removes the person. And then it says the person will be replaced as um indicated in the charter. So this assumes a one place. Um a one step process. Um. And I think that is it for this section.
I mean, I'm. Decisive. Um alrighty, um. Anthony, do we have any other? Sections that you're prepared to talk about today?
We don't, we don't have anything else prepared at this moment. I think the next sections that we'd go over, we kind of skipped around into this one earlier than we normally would have. I think the next section would be on financial uh management. That's sort of the creation of the budget, scheduling, going up and presented to the council, things of that nature.
Okay, sorry, Joe.
Nice just question about the whole like. Going back to eight point five on the ineligible measures. I mean, one of the things that we have at our town meetings and maybe a lot of people do, but we have a lot of these non binding citizen war articles like. Surely you can't just get something on a ballot and call some referendum. With something like that. And I don't totally see that expressly stated in the ineligible measures. Unless you're referring to that under like memorial resolutions.
I'm sorry, I mean, could you? I was looking, I was trying to find the number that you were telling me. Um could could you explain what you mean? Could you repeat that?
A lot of non binding citizen war articles that come forward and I. I, a lot. And they take up a lot of time and then they they don't. They can be enforced or they cannot be enforced, let's put it that way.
The John Giordio often says, yes, you can vote it, but it's it's not gonna have any effect.
Yeah, but some do, just like this committee exists based off a non binding.
Wasn't there language proceeding this in here today about how towns lawyer council? Had to approve everything or go everything.
They do it. That would be a big checkup that people are not gonna like. But I don't, we're not saying that that's ineligible to have a non binding. And I don't know if we want to state that expressly or not, or if you're just saying, hey, we'll let county council decide. I mean, I, that's a big decision for them, but that's.
So in other words, your your issue is with citizens' articles. Dark sky is the one that comes to mind. It gets passed, but there's really no enforcement mechanism or resource to enforce it. And so it gets passed. And it just sort of drifts into the fog and.
I don't think hers was non binding. I think that was actually a bylaw that got passed. I think. So it's more if somebody puts something forward and the attorney says this is not legal and they submit the. Responds to the petitioners, it says, or the first, I think it said first ten petitioners that say, sorry, this isn't legal. By the way, the way I read that, it just stops there. But is that what you're referring to or? No, I'm saying like, I think town, it's really gonna be up to town council. That's how I understand this. Town council is gonna decide if this can go forward or not. But I'm asking, can a town, can our town council, not our committee, but the town council, our lawyers, say this non binding article? Could go forward even though really it's not enforceable. I mean, that would be a lot of resources and time wasted, which I personally feel like is what happens now on some things, everything. But we have a lot of people that do it because they're trying to make a political point, right? They want to bring up an issue that's important to them. And sometimes it's really good. I mean, we have that um. We've had that a lot, but. I would hate for this to devolve into that.
Are you just talking about section eight five?
Just in the ineligible measures, like do we want to say? Things that are.
Or other matters. Um, I mean.
I mean.
Uh so I would just. So I would just say that there's an assumption that if something goes to the ballot, that it's legal and enforceable. It's not a non-binding, the resident's petition is intended to be a binding um, a like, a, a binding ballot question. Maybe, I don't know if you have an example, um.
Can I give a shot?
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Sure. Okay, I think all of your non-binding questions would fall into eight two, into free petition. Because if it's a resident initiative measure, you're requesting a specific piece of legislation to go into. So you're requesting a bylaw or some sort of binding change in eight three. If you were just gonna simply, you know, have a non-binding question, I don't pick your, pick your poison for our most recent non-binding questions. I think that would fall squarely within free petition, that's where that would be. And I think some of it will have to come with instruction to say, this is what I'm looking to do.
Yeah.
And then the town clerk handing these forms out would be like, you're gonna be applying through free petition. Because you're not requesting specific legislation, you're requesting a non-binding, like. Sense of the community and council essentially.
Well, uh, but again, some of these people don't, sorry, you know, a lot of people think that it is binding. They don't have to enforce that, um, an example, last year, we had a woman that came and she wanted the town to spend money. Now, again, I understand the appropriation thing that's not on here, but that is ineligible. But she wanted the town to investigate the African-American media house, she didn't like the results of what happened. And so she wanted the town to do another um investigation into that. And so her article is non-binding precisely because of the appropriation. But then the um select board decided to move forward and go ahead and, and enforce this. But technically, according to town council, it was non-binding. So it was up to them to enforce, and I hear what you're saying, maybe it's just a different mechanism.
But, but this, I mean, at all these free petitions, they're gonna have, they have to go through uh town council, town CEO, you know, lawyer, the town lawyer. Right, or no?
It's M B here.
The, the initiatives do on the ballot.
The initiative, the free petition doesn't necessarily require a town council with the S.
I think it's, as long as you leave it not ineligible. Then it could be questioned. It's an action.
But it's gonna get pulled by town council and not the town council, that's what I'm saying.
No, because you could have a ballot, it could just go valid, it's saying that it's, it's, it's a response to an action. Right, and as, as long as it's not on the list of ineligible, then it could be vetoed. So I mean, I think it's, it's clear that. That, that we could have, you could have a referendum on it.
Anthony?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, I was just gonna, um, because I guess it can be a little confusing, especially coming from the town meeting forms you have now. Where it sounds like the example given was um, uh, the, the, the town lawyer basically said, this is not. An actionable, an actionable item, so they put it on the, on the warrant. Basically to get the se- a sense of, you know, how the, how the community felt about the item, and then the select board decided how to move forward. Because they've got the, once the budget's up, they get the ability to fund things, um, on this particular investigation that we're talking about. Under the, the proposal that's in front of you, um, if the council, if the town council, the town attorney. Determines that the proposal is not legal, not a legal um initiative, then it will not appear on any ballot at all. I think one of the complicating factors here, not to make this more complicated for you, is that the council can put. Non-binding issues on a ballot, um, in a sense of getting the sense of the community, getting a sense of the community on some issue. I think one of what you just uh discussed was, the just select board discussed was, you know, does um, Nantucket want to have. Um, a town council from a government, and rather than putting that proposal on, just putting forward a non-binding question. So that avenue is still available, um. Um, but that's different than an illegal measure, and so if you don't want, and so I, I guess, in theory, someone could put forward a proposal that says. I'm not asking the town to take an action, um, I would like the town to get a sense of, of something, and I would like to put that on the ballot. I don't think that's precluded based on, on the current language that you have in front of you. Anything that's illegal would not, or you know, that's illegal and inappropriate or not on the list, I'm sorry, or on the list, uh, at eight point five, could not be on a ballot. Um, but a sense of, but a non-binding question in the sense that I want to get a sense of the community, that could go forward on a ballot. Um, through this process, so if you want to exclude that, you could write that in that section. And Pat, tell me, are non-binding questions not available for the, um, I, I didn't see it on the list, but I don't know if that was the intention of the list to exclude.
Um, generally, this issue doesn't come up because. You, under this, it seems that only the town council has the option of putting now, non-binding things on the ballot. And that's under their particular section and what they're permitted to do under state law. Um, anything that goes on the ballot has to be, you know, by definitions, has to, is binding and enforceable. So really, the town attorney is going to be the gatekeeper for that. Um, my suggestion, one of the things we can do is um, just kind of put a note in the ineligible measures. And ask KP Law to weigh in on whether that's necessary in the charter when they get to it. And say the intent, you know, we'll put a note saying the intent is that this is not a forum for non-binding issues to go forward. Um, based on a petition, um, and um, you know, we can have the attorneys weigh in on whether they think this language is sufficient for that.
And, and non-binding being specifically a question that's meant to get a sense of the community, not an, not an otherwise um, unallowable question. That then tries to get finagled and say, you know, we want to split the difference and still have that person's question presented, but not put the sort of illegal actionable item on. So that, that, that sort of, that exists, I guess, now under your current system, which wouldn't necessarily have the option under what's, what's proposed, what's in front of it.
Right, hmm, people here don't like that very much. Although I love it.
Well, there's still a lot of opportunity to bring that through the other measures, through the free petition before, you know, going to the council through the open meeting. They may decide we want to have a conversation on this, um, there are other avenues, it's just not available at the ballot box. And that's not really available right now either, um, so, um, you know, that's not a change.
So, so just thinking this through, on Nantucket, we're used to having people be able to. Talk about their issues in this format where it, it, it titularly becomes a. Um, a uh, um.
What, what?
A warrant or? A warrant article, and it can get voted on, but it's non-binding. So that accomplishes in the community a kind of validation of the concern. And an appearance of an informator, legislative informator, even though it isn't one, which Jill, you're, you're saying is wasteful of time. Is inefficient, because we have so many.
Well, I want to be careful about that, actually, I mean, Curtis's article is not mighty. That didn't, so it was not like it was not important and that, that the select board took it up and decided to. Move forward, yeah, so I don't want to say all non-binding articles are, you know, a waste of time. I don't feel that way, but there are some where you're like.
But the council could initiate, take the article and make it an, an action item if they chose.
But, you know, but, but part of the whole reason to consider and perhaps move to town council for a government is.
To get rid of it.
To get rid of some of the excess. I don't know, um, um, idiosyncratic articles that tend to clog up the, the warrant for Nantucket.
Yes.
And we're proposing a form of government that has numerous ways that individual citizens or groups of citizens can. Come to a town council meeting, can petition, can, all, all these things we've talked about, um. I'm not saying it would, it's gonna make them all go away, because somebody could always come up with some thing that they wanted, right? But hopefully, this process and this form of government winnows down because you give people an oppor- other opportunities to make their voice heard. And at the same time, for stuff that, all due respect to our citizens, something that really isn't of concern to a large group of people, the town council is probably gonna say, thank you very much, Mrs. Jones. We appreciate your input, and then they're not gonna do anything, because relative to the residents of the town, nothing should get done.
But at the same time, they can move things along more quickly too, instead of waiting to you.
So I'm, I'm just wondering, currently in our system now, what is it accomplishing? To have these non-binding um, articles?
Well, there's a lot, I mean, citizens have a chance to bring an issue forward that the select board doesn't want to bring up in, on their agendas, maybe, so. Um, maybe Curtis, you can speak to your experience about it, but. There are issues out there that people don't feel like this select board will hear them on, and so they just take it to the voters, I mean, that, that's really what all the citizens.
The select board is not the legislature.
I, I know that, but it doesn't mean that they, that people don't want them to put it on an agenda and discuss it and be able to bring it to a larger public. Discussion, and that's what they can do that they can't do at town meeting.
Any other? Not sure where. Well, and I think, we, obviously, we don't know how town council is gonna work, we don't, we're, we're. We're all experienced with any, with town meeting, we haven't really done a town council, um, some of us have viewed how their meetings work. But I guess I've always expected that some of the um. Excessive amounts of time that gets chewed up on some of these kind of things at town meeting will go away. Because town council will op- will operate continuously and deal with ones that are worth dealing with. And will presumably not deal with ones that aren't, I hope.
I'm just, I'm just still trying to understand, currently, if we wanted, in our current system, if we wanted to make a change. And winnow out some of the excess of these things to increase efficiency, how would we do that now? Or i- is it just part and parcel of our current form of government?
Charter says we have to do it.
We do it, okay.
Well, you could increase the numbers, if there's ten now, it's, it's very easy to get an article on the warrant.
Yeah, that's true.
Usually covered by state law, and you can't, you can't bury those, those uh, options under a town meeting form of government.
In, in many of the things that we're talking about, you, you actually turned it, you have your articles, and again, it's, it's interesting to talk about articles versus the ballot. Because the meeting, the town meeting is not, is not the ballot, it's, it's, it, it's the, it's the legislative session, which would be each meeting of your town council. And the articles go to the attorney, the attorney makes a decision um, about whether or not it's appropriate for town meeting. Or whether it's an actionable item, and, and then it sounds like there's been a process in which we'll say, okay, let's, let's still put it on the agenda. So people can talk about it, that's not, I, I would say that's not really going in the sense that if you, the, the, the council, the town council. Can say, you know, let's have a committee meeting, let's create a committee or let's address it another way, we, we're not, we don't have something to act on legislatively. So th- there are avenues here that's, I, I think we get a little caught up in the section that we're on, because it's talking about resident um, initiative uh petitions. But people can still talk to their, you know, the broader concept is people can still talk to the counselors, they can still speak out at the meetings. And, and that's where, say, you know, if a counselor says, or you're hearing, we can't legally address this, but let's talk, for example, this investigation. Let's have a committee meeting to talk about what the concerns are, to, to address, you know, what the community, community is feeling and see what we can do.
Can I give an example, I mean, of something going on now, we have a group of people that want to put it on a select board agenda to. Talk about buying a property through eminent domain. Now, I don't know if they can get a hundred people to sign something and keep, I, I don't know, maybe, but that, you know. I don't think the select board is gonna be putting this on the agenda, um, and so. I just wanted to play that out in the town council, like, I, I think it's a really dangerous idea personally, but, you know, there are ways you can.
So. Well, let's game through that.
Yeah, no, it's a good one, because it's current.
Okay. So that goes to town council. Let's say town council votes for it.
Big town council, big T, little T.
The town council in this system. The legislative, the, the, the thing we're proposing. Not the words.
I'm calling that big T.
Okay, fine, there's the town council, they approve it. Bunch of other residents put together a petition, ten of them, and they go to section eight point five. And they see, they check the ineligible measures, and they see that they can petition this, and they can put it on a ballot. And they can overturn that decision. That's how that would work. I, I, the sense here is, how do you limit the fluff? Right, and you limit the fluff by engaging the. Legislative and the executive together into what's politically feasible. Which is a very small window. And that is the political reality, like, a lot of things are not enforceable, but there are ideas on how to enforce them. And so how do you distill all of that decision into something that could be a reality legislatively? And so that's what we're doing with this town council thing, it's like, when you have these people in a room. Talking with the executive and figuring out what is feasible, then the fluff goes away.
How come our current town council, Small T, isn't winnowing out more of those things? Since he uh is aware of what is and isn't enforceable.
Well, he tells them that, but they get enough signatures for it to go on the ballot, and he does tell, they know that.
And he has office hours to do that.
Yeah, and he says that's legal as to form or not legal as to form and.
But, but he's, he is not a gatekeeper where he says, well, since it's not gonna be binding, then you can't do it. Because of how our government is now, they can still do it and they can have their say and they can get heard. And that's, that's probably what it's accomplishing right now, it's a way for people to have conversations in a pointed way. That maybe even suggests this is an enforceable thing when it isn't.
There, there's also an intermediate, like, he does comment to the finance committee when the warrant is presented. And believe me, he will apply on these issues, yeah.
There's usually a summary as well that gets put out with council's comments, so you'll know which articles are, if they pass, they're considered non-binding. So even if they pass, like to Jill's point, there could be something that passes, the town council still doesn't act on it. And I was just trying to pull up the last town meeting warrant to get a different example besides like purchasing a property or budget. And so there was one about not allowing, basically telling the town that they can't use funds related to. To buy a property, yeah, to. And then there was another that uh was put out there that wanted the select board to requested town assistance with evictions. So people who rented below market. Yeah. Wanted assistance from the town for people who were stopped paying rent. And the council had indicated, well, this is non-binding, and any dispute between would have, right, so it passed. But it doesn't mean that the town now has to get involved in tenant landlord matters.
Yeah.
So I think that's where Jill says, there's a lot of stuff that happens, and people say, well, it passed town meeting, the town's not doing anything about it. But just because it passes doesn't mean there's an action that they can go forward, so.
I'm just so curious, like, what, what is the actual effect on Nantucket of even, of, of that process? Like, does it, does it make us as citizens, as voters, feel morally interested in the thing? And as neighbors, you know, oh, well, you're not supposed to do that, or let me help you kick somebody out, or what is it accomplishing?
Yes.
Okay.
You are morally interested in the thing, you raised awareness and participated in the decision process.
So that the people, citizens, become a little bit more authorities of the wishes. That were expressed at town meeting, even though the town doesn't have the resources to back it up.
People become powerful, I've seen somewhere.
But, but again, under the town council form, a lot of these things, yeah, just, I think the way, the way I see it is. A lot of these things are gonna be dealt with in a regular town council meeting, they're gonna stand up and say, I have this particular issue, or I want to bring, you know. And they, and the town council will either say, that's something we want to deal with, or no, and then if it's, they say no, and the, and the particular petitioner is really determined. They will start the processes we've been talking about.
Yes, yeah, no, they've got their checks and balances, I know, but I'm with you, I just wanted to make sure we, like. A lot of these things do take up a lot of time now, weekly at our select board meetings. And then also um, on the warrant every year and.
I mean, hopefully we can reduce them. Um. Okay, any others questions or issues about our main agenda item, I, I had one very minor thing I wanted to ask the committee about. And Caroline, didn't you wanna ask, uh, Colin Center about the mayor?
Um, I wanted to report back on the proprietor's thing, which I did a little more research on for the question that we had from number of public. Um. I, um, took the opportunity to, um, introduce myself to, um. Former town planner to ask about. And, yes, um, and. He said that they were, the proprietors were phased out officially in the nineties. So they, therefore, that's why they're not in the current charter, and that's why they wouldn't be going into a charter. Now, so, so.
Thank you. Um, the one thing I wanted to ask the committee about was, I had, um. An email from Libby the other day, she, um, a couple of days ago, she wanted to know. Whether the town council study committee was interested in. Um, a, a sense of the meeting vote at town meeting. And a sense of the meeting vote in the ballot, or, or just one or the other, and I. I guess I'm under the impression we wanted both, but I wanted to make sure that you were all on board with that. Um, and I was gonna be chatting with her tomorrow, cause she just said we ought to think about the. The schedule for town meeting and when they're gonna need a, you know, write-up or something.
I would support too, but how it's worded. At sense of town meeting, um, so, you know, you don't get caught in the crossfire, it's gotta be very carefully worded. Uh, on both, of those items.
Well, I was, I was gonna chat with Libby tomorrow and then come up with a draft. Write up, and that's gonna go to KP Law, so. Hopefully we'll get a chance to.
Can we look at it before it goes to KP Law?
Sure.
Yeah, I agree, I just wanna amplify that because. There are a couple of different ways to, there are a lot of different ways to look at that. You could ask people, do you want the option to vote on this, or you could ask them, do you think this is a good? Like, more directly, do, would you like to go to a town council? So I think those are, that will be a decision, I think, yeah.
Well, I will. When I write something up, I will.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just wanna, what you guys were talking about before, um, I just wanna give a quick little. Uh, add a little color to, um. The kind of three things that came up about things that bubbled up from citizens. It's, uh, coincidentally, two of them are on our agenda tonight, we are choosing the firm for, for the African meeting house, um, incident. Investigation, we're also have a briefing on eminent domain tonight at the end of our meeting. And the evictions one is quite interesting because that really. It obviously has something to do with the town in Nantucket, but it's really the county. Function in the court system, so that was amended on the floor, and it was an ask to our legislative, state legislative delegation. To file legislation, and Senator Seer and Rep. Elect Mokley are going to be doing that. So it was kind of an interesting process that bubbled up from a citizen and is now gonna be turned into legislation. And we'll see, um, because there's funding required from the state and et cetera, but, um, it's just kind of a unique mechanism. Or way that bubbled up from a citizens' warrant article that got amended on the floor.
Cool, thank you, Tom. All righty, any other?
What's next, are we gonna get a next step from Anthony?
Anthony, can you summarize what you think our next discussion will be, cause the next meeting is in four weeks on December fourth.
Well, the next item on the work plan would be the, um, financial procedures section, so that covers, um. Um. Budgeting, uh, capital planning, um, there's the process of the submission of the budget from. Under the town council form would be the creation by the town manager and then submission to the council and the process for approval, so it's, it's a lot of those sort of nitty gritty, um, uh, financial procedures.
And then what's after that?
Uh, double check. Uh.
For what it's worth, everybody, I guess the way I was figuring these, sort of stretching out the meetings, we'll have a meeting on December fourth, I think the next one is January eighth. And at the January eighth meeting, I think we can sort of see where we are, see how much is left on the to-do list with the Colin Center group. And think about what are the, what are the, you know, what sort of projects and tasks we wanna put for ourselves leading up to.
Well, I'd like to get someone to get a draft charter with all of our discussion in it, so we can, I, I mean, we look at pieces. I'd like to look at the whole thing and say, okay, we've got section eight, now we're gonna do nine. But I'd like to see the whole framework sooner rather than later.
We can get that to you, so, uh, actually, we, I talked about this with Joe a couple of days ago, but so. Um, financial and fiscal procedures would be next, um, then the other, other things we'd have to do are, um, elections, um. And then we've sent you, um. Uh, the red text on what you have now is sort of the boilerplate, so that you got a boilerplate general provisions, a boilerplate. Um, introduction, so we're not planning to have full meetings on those, but if anybody has. Concerns or thoughts about those sections, we sort of welcome that, those comments, but. Um, after the elections, um, and Mel or Pat, just cause I'm sort of looking at this quickly, correct me if I'm wrong, but after, um, elections. Um. And financial procedures, and the last part is, um, the transition, transition section, um, and that's, that's the end of. Sort of the drafting of the town charter, and. We have a meeting to sort of port over the necessary changes to the, um, county charter.
Okay. Anthony, thank you, uh, Melon, Melon, Pat, thank you, um, thanks, everybody for your contribution, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All righty, guys, thanks.